May 10th, abbreviated May 10th, 2007, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll rise and let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Just real quick, before we get started, we have pulled Falcon Trace, Vero Estates, and Rosewood Place, Royal Oaks Development. And in fact, I'm told Royal Oaks pulled it permanently. So, let's see. We have the approval of the minutes. Anybody have any changes?
Move to adopt as presented. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, unanimous. Items not on consent emerge the operations center wireless communications tower. Request for administrative permit use approval to construct a wireless communications monopole tower in Indian River County owner agent located at forty-two twenty-five Forty-Third Avenue. Zoning classification IG, general industrial land use designation PUB, public. And this is quasi judicial. And Brian is going to do this, but before we do that, let's do the swearing in. All right, I'm sorry, anybody that, let's see, we have one quasi only? No. Yes, this is the only quasi. Anybody that's going to speak about this matter needs to be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that any testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, seeing that nobody from the public is sworn in, I assume we're not going to have any public comment.
Thank you Chairman Bruce. I'm Brian Freeman, Indian River County Senior Planner, and this is a request for administrative use approval for a communications tower to be located at the new emergency operations center, which is currently under construction. And the new EOC is located on the west side of Forty-Third Avenue and is between two other county buildings that were completed in 2006. Those are the Utilities Operations Center and the Administrative Annex, which houses the Supervisor of Elections Office. And then also located to the west of the EOC is the County Road and Bridge Facility. To the east of the site across Forty-Third Avenue, there is a Grove, I believe it's still there at this time, although there is an approved subdivision which has not been constructed on that Grove site. And also just to the north of that is Dodger Town Elementary School. The site and the properties adjacent to it on the west side of Forty-Third Avenue are all zoned industrial, and there's residential zoning on the east side of Forty-Third Avenue. The proposed tower will be used for emergency and public safety communications, and the proposed tower would be a one-hundred-foot-tall monopole. And the proposed tower meets the setback requirements for a tower of its height, which would be one-hundred feet from the nearest property lines. And actually, from the tower to the nearest property line is actually about four-hundred feet, and that adjacent use is a salvage yard. In addition, the tower has been designed to withstand two-hundred mile-per-hour winds, which is a standard which is higher than is typically associated with communications towers or any type of structure for that matter. And that's actually tied to a grant the county received from the state of Florida for the new EOC facility, that the facility be designed to withstand two-hundred mile-per-hour winds. And on the tower will be a minimum of six antenna, and of those antenna, one will be a dish-type antenna, and the others will all be more a standard whip-style antenna. And all the antenna will be mounted in a manner that's close to the pole. And also, all the landscape requirements that apply to communications towers are satisfied by the site plan. This is an aerial view of the EOC facility, which is currently under construction. As you can see, Forty-Third Avenue is in the foregrounds, and to the left of the site, or the south, would be the Utilities Operations Center. And to the right, or the north, would be the new Administrative Annex and the salvage yard. And the tower is located to the rear of the building, which is under construction. And that depiction of it is approximately to scale as far as the height of the tower is concerned. And this is a site plan of the EOC. The EOC site plan was a staff-level approval, and that was approved in the summer of 2006. And as you can tell from the aerials, currently well under construction. The communications tower is a use that does require approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission, so that is why it is for your consideration tonight. This is a photo simulation, which has been submitted for the tower. And as you can see, it's located back behind the building, which is under construction. And also associated with the tower is a two-hundred-and-forty-square-foot transmitter building that will house equipment associated with the tower. This view is from, looking from Forty-Third Avenue. I've got another view, this one's from a little further away, and this is from Forty-First Street. And the foreground is the utilities complex, and you can see the tower would be located just to the north of the utilities building. Based on the analysis contained within the staff report that was just summarized, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission grant administrative use approval for the communications tower.
Great. Does anybody have any questions up here?
Refresh my memory, if you would please, about the requirements for the lighting on these towers as close to the airport?
Well, the county's ordinance essentially defers to FAA requirements regarding lighting. So if the FAA requires lighting, then the tower is to be lighted. And I believe, having reviewed the FAA permit that was issued for the tower, I think lighting actually was not required.
Okay.
We do have lighting.
Just one second, you need to go ahead and get sworn in. Is anybody else going to speak on this matter?
Do you swear affirm that any testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Sorry for the.
So there was a requirement for lighting, or you just?
Yes, okay. Great, thank you. That was my only concern.
Steve, I just got an information question. For this location use, why is it the only option? Why is a monopole the only option?
Well, the only other option is what they call a lattice-type tower, and it's not permitted under a straightforward approval, and just because of the nature of the regulations. And this tower is the most direct, it's an unguide tower, which allows us maximum use of the site, and it does have to withstand two-hundred miles-an-hour of wind. And we felt that, in conversation with planning, we felt like this was the best, the best solution.
Okay, thank you.
If I might add, generally, there's three types of towers. There's lattice towers, guide towers, and monopole towers. And the county's ordinance actually requires wireless towers to be monopole towers, and that's primarily for aesthetic reasons. They're less unsightly than, in comparison to the other two types of towers.
Out of curiosity, Mr. Bloom, is this a steel tower?
Yes, it's a steel, galvanized steel tower. It's about thirty-nine inches in diameter, thirty-three inches in diameter at the top and about fifty-six at the bottom. And that is due to the wind requirements.
Steve, one other formality, you need to state your name and.
Yes, Steve Bloom, project manager.
Thanks.
What's the cost of the tower?
Hundred-and-fifty thousand, roughly.
And it's solely to support the EOC, or does it have other?
No, it's the sole, sole use of the EOC, public safety and emergency services.
Great. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anybody else? Let's go ahead and open the public hearing. I don't think anybody wanted to speak, but, okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Move to adopt as presented.
Okay, there we have our motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
What's your opinion, Dave, Steve?
It's very soon, we're going to be trying to move. The billing itself is approximately ninety-five percent, but the tower's going to take a little bit longer because of processing.
Will we get a tour of the place when it opens?
Absolutely.
I guess I should, I'm on the Emergency Services Committee. I'm not you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, under public hearings, we have county-initiated requests for approval of small-scale competent plan future land use map amendment to re-designate one-point-three-two acres from C-one to L-one, and to rezon those one-point-three-two acres from Con-one to RS-three, and re-designate seven-point-six acres from WACT to L-one, and to re-designate six-point-seven-six acres from L-one to WACT, and to re-designate two-point-four-two acres from L-one to C-one, and rezon those two-point-four-two acres from RS-three to Con-one. Properties are located east of State Road A-1A between Wicklow Way and Hammock Way. State of Florida Board of Trustees, Windsor Properties, Inc., and the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners are the owners. And this is legislative, and Gail, you're up.
Thank you. Gail Connery, Senior Planner, Long Range Planning Section. This particular amendment is a small-scale amendment. As you probably well aware, there's only two windows for most amendments, January and July. You've just got through reviewing some in April for account plan amendments. But small-scale amendments are a little bit different. The state generally views small-scale amendments as having fewer potential impacts. They are always land use amendments that are less than ten acres and doesn't involve any environmental-sensitive lands. The streamlined review, and it's also exempt from, as I said, the twice-a-year limit. Trying these to work. The location of the properties are, as you mentioned, between Hammock Way to the north and to Wicklow Way down here to the south by the Sandaling subdivision. So about eighteen acres in total. And what we have is eight-point-nine acres that is going to go from public ownership to privately, private ownership. This is, this land will go to Windsor. And to the south, we have a little over nine acres, which will go, that is currently owned by Windsor and is going to go to the state and county. The purpose of this swap, because there's three entities that are actually involved in this, and all of them have reviewed this beforehand and agreed to this land use swap. So the purpose is to swap the land use designations on land owned by these three entities, the county, Board of Trustees for the state, and Windsor Properties. And to secure the land use designation and zoning necessary to develop the sites under those, the requested land use designations and zoning. This will partially complete the terms of this land exchange agreement between the three parties. This is the property that's currently owned by the county and the state. You might be able to make out this blue strip right here, that's about one-point-three-two acres that currently belongs to the state, and that's, has a conservation land use designation right now. And then the northern half of the Golden Sands Park, right here, is shaded green, that also, both of those parcels will go to the L-one, or low-density residential, up to three units per acre. The park property already has an RS-three zoning district, because parks are allowed in most all the zoning districts. So there's no need to change the zoning there, but we will be changing the zoning on the state-owned property to RS-three. This is the site for the park right here, just wanted to highlight that for a second for you to show you where that's at. This is the land that's going to be transferred from Windsor to the county here. What we're doing is actually is moving the park to the south. That's what this proposed WACT area, the area that's unshaded will be rezoned, the land use designation will be changed, and again, there's no need to change the zoning. But, and then the area to the north will be converted to the L-one. So what we have is six-point-seven-six acres right here, shaded in the green. That's going to go from the L-one land use designation to WACT, so that we can move the park facilities to the south. There's also a fifty-foot-wide conservation easement here, I hope you can see that at the bottom. Don't know how well that came out. That's going to be on the park property. It's about point-six-nine acres, but the conservation itself will be conveyed to the state. So that's why we're looking at the two acreages combined. This other, this is actually one-point-seven-three acres that the state will actually own, but the both of those combined are going to go to conservation. So you're looking at two-point-four acres that are going to go to conservation land use designation and zoning. As for the existing uses, the areas that you see to the east of these properties that's not platted, that's generally the Windsor Properties Golf Course. Then you have some platted properties here in Boeing, the Windsor Properties, or the Development, Town of Forkett, and to the south, you have the Sandaling subdivision. With all land use amendments, account plan amendments, we have to look at the following criteria, the concurrency, whether the concurrency test is met, consistency with the comprehensive plan, the environmental impact of the request, and its compatibility with surrounding uses. This request is exempt from concurrency, I hope I made that pretty clear. It's generally just a swap. And actually, we're coming out with a little bit more conservation land than we originally had, and the residential units will be less than what's currently allowed. We've looked at the comprehensive plan, all the policies and objectives that, and to check to see this request is consistent with the current plan. In particular, we look at policy fourteen-point-three and the four criteria that we've gone over before. Only under these four criteria can we change the current plan. That is to correct a mistake, correct an oversight, if there's substantial change in circumstances affecting that property, or if there's a land use swap or reconfiguration of land use designations. In this case, it meets the fourth criteria, the swap or reconfiguration. Therefore, it's consistent with the current plan. As for environmental impacts, generally, this is going to be enhancing the environmental quality, because we're actually gaining almost another acre of conservation land in all, in total. As for compatibility, there's not really any significant change here. Just a portion of the park will be moved into the south. There was some concern about its compatibility with the Sandaling subdivision to the south here, but the staff's position that moving the two-point-four acres of conservation to the north should offer a generous buffer from the park to the residents in the Sandaling subdivision. Therefore, no incompatibilities are anticipated. And in conclusion, the land use designations and zoning are compatible with surrounding uses. It's consistent with our current plan, exempt from the concurrency tests, and no additional environmental impacts. Therefore, staff supports the request and recommends the planning and zoning, and also recommended the board to approve the request to change the land use and zoning as proposed. I'll be glad to answer any questions, or back up to another slide.
Gail, when you started this off, you said that it had to be less than ten acres and have no environmentally sensitive lands?
Right, right. Well, like I said, yeah, I was wondering if you were going to ask that question when I said that. Because, you know, the state's reviewed it all, and they feel it's pretty much a wash, you know? They're actually going to gain more environmentally sensitive lands, or a better quality of land, as I understand it. So that's why the state's agreed to the swap.
I hesitated to bring that up, but.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you did.
It's a good deal for the county and.
And for the state, yeah.
Has the Sandaling subdivision been notified? Have they?
Yes, sir.
Have they?
Well, I was surprised that there was no.
Okay, we'll hear from them later then? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions up here?
Where do you get the one acre more? How do you figure that?
Well, right now, the state owns one-point-three-two acres. And they're going to get one-point-seven from Windsor. And then there's also that point-six-nine of conservation that's actually on county land, but it's all going to go to the conservation land use designation. So we end up with two-point-four rather than the one-point-three we had originally.
How wide is the two-point-four?
Um, let me see real quick.
I seem to remember something like fifty feet.
That was point-six-nine, wasn't it?
That's about, about one-hundred-and-seventy-five feet across.
Any other questions up here? Okay, this is a public hearing. I'd like to open this.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure, go ahead.
What has Windsor given as the reason that they, they apparently initiated this?
All right.
And is it because it's more proximate to their property?
That's my general understanding, but I think that.
Why don't you talk about what the county's getting out of this? I mean, that would probably answer this question and a few more. Bill, do you want to?
Bill DeBrau, from the county attorney's office. I've been involved in this matter from the very beginning. Windsor's desire to get involved in this and make this exchange is that their property then becomes contiguous. If you take a look at the Elmo, they're separated by our park, and they would go ahead and get to, get their property contiguous. They have agreed to limit it to three units per acre of the new property that they acquired. They're going to deed restrict it so that there's dune preservation, so that there's a single crossover that's involved in this matter. They're going to go ahead and build the county a new park in essentially the same entrance point, but obviously, a new parking lot. There's going to be a million dollars donated that has been earmarked for recreational activities in Indian River County. And we're going to get a brand-new park. The buffer strip is widened between the county and Sandaling, and there's going to be the opportunity for passive recreation, bench, nature trail, small kiosks, information kiosks, something of that nature. But that's a sketch of what's going to be exchanged in this matter.
What's the reduction in the number of units that are available to Windsor after the exchange?
I believe it's now RS-three. They're going to limit it to only six units total, so I think they could put how many units in there altogether? If it's.
Six to nine.
They're getting nine, I think, and they're limiting it to six, so they're going, so it's pretty low. It's pretty low.
If you can get six on there even, you're probably at five.
Okay.
Thank you.
Started opening the public hearing, I'll go ahead and do that. Each person, when you come up, if you will state your name and address for the record, please.
Swear amen.
Are you going to swear amen?
No, it's legislative.
Do they have to be sworn in? Correct? Good evening, how are you? My name is Bob Browntree. I live at twenty-two seventy Sandaling Lane. And if I can, just by way of background, I've been at Sandaling since 2001. I bought a house there that was in desperate need of remodeling, and one of the things that we were attracted to about the property was that we were immediately adjacent to the Windsor property at the time, and currently it was preserved as conservation land, left in the wild. Very enticing in terms of being a homeowner there. And we felt like if, when we asked all the questions, it seemed like at the time when we bought the property, our alternative was that we were going to have either the conservation land appearance that we have now, or we were going to have the Windsor-type homes as neighbors, both of which, as a real estate investor, I think were good moves for us. If it stayed conservation land, it was attractive. If it became a home built by Windsor organization, we felt that that would also be attractive and enhance the value of our home and make it a very wonderful place for us to spend our winters. Since then, we've become full-time residents of Vero Beach. And we're particularly concerned about this for a lot of reasons. And let me say that the first is that until the early April notification, my wife and I, as a butters, were never notified. We never got anything from anyone.
I think I'd have to beg to differ on that. I mean, you got notified by letter from Windsor, and there was a deal.
Not to me, I never got it.
With your homeowners association.
But, I mean, there is a homeowners association, I mean, it's a, there are seven people that live there, and they sent me to a secretary who has no authorization, no power to do anything.
Well, I've seen copies of the letter, so, you know.
How were they notified, Gail? Our Bob or?
Originally, we did send a notification to the property owners association, I believe it was. We found out later, I think, Mr. McDonald, Paul McDonald, I think was supposed to have been.
Paul died, yes.
Yeah, he died. But his son contacted us, and I forwarded all the information to him. And also, I believe Mrs. Browntree also contacted me.
That was in the news last month.
Well, this is, you know.
I don't want to make a big deal out of it, but it just disappoints us. I guess we're friendly and then largely the requirements there that we're very used to, because we're business people there and we go through zoning propositions quite often. One of the clear things that they always made us do there, and not saying that it's required here, but, was that we had to be very specially careful of sending certified notices to the butters, so that they knew what was going on. I'm just saying to you in very general terms, we weren't informed. It's as simple as that. The person that was the, so to speak, representative of the property owners association was a self-appointed representative, and with no authorization from any of the property owners to do anything specifically. But let me tell you how we understand it went, because we do not deny that the property owners association through Lyndon McKeen was notified. And what they came back to us, they made a presentation to us that essentially all that was said, Windsor wanted to swap the properties. It makes incredible sense. If I were Windsor, I'd want to do exactly the same thing. It makes incredible sense for them to make a contribution to the county. I think that's wonderful, it helps our parks, it's not all bad to ever get any money. So the money is very attractive. But what they originally came to us and said, we'd like to do this deal, and what we want to do is we want to give you all six-hundred thousand dollars to make this deal go through, or thereabouts. So, you know, we looked at it, and everyone in Windsor and Sandaling said, you know, the money's really nice, but the more critical thing is to make sure that our privacy is protected. So in that conversation, Windsor pointed out to us that there would be, at the very worst, at the very worst, conservation property that would consist of not less than five-hundred front feet on the ocean. And with that being said, we said, if it's five-hundred front feet, that's our buffer between us and the park, fine, let's do the deal, we don't, we don't mind at all. Later, it went through several meetings, and I'm completely understanding that it's been, been through a lot of processes, and they appear to be all well thought out. We got the map from, from Gail a couple of weeks ago. A question at the time on the map was, we couldn't see what that two-point-four-two acres was in terms of front feet on the, on the ocean. However, we were, hopefully, more than simple terms, we knew that that, in that, is in five-hundred front feet. And one of the reasons and biggest concerns that we're here tonight is to tell you that, you know, that's what we thought we were going to do for, if it was five-hundred feet, great. Because right now, I am the immediate butter, and in the past three years, it's been, it's been very difficult. Two of our homes and our property owners and our association went in the ocean. My house sustained an excessive million dollars' worth of damage. As a community, we were obligated to preserve our properties to spend a million and a half dollars on a seawall. All of this to be done, in essence, to preserve that which we all thought we had when we went to Sandaling. And it's very peaceful, it's a little bit off the beaten track, it's very quiet, we don't have to be concerned about traffic congestion or anything of that nature. We've got a nice little property with, that we're very, all very, very happy with. Meaning specifically what happens on the beach, and the beach is quite far away from us right now, it doesn't even affect us. With the exception of the fact that whole bunches of people come down from the beach and walk down in the ocean. And among the things that'll tell you that are concerning to us is that it's not untypical for us to have to clear the bitter bottles off of our beach walkover. It's not untypical for us to have a knock on the door to see if someone can use the bathroom. It's not untypical for us to have water bottles thrown in the yard. And it's not untypical for folks going down the dune that was created by Windsor after the, after the 2004 storms, and which we urge them, please do not, the dune, not part of the public property, that's something that must be preserved in order to, right now, the dune immediately next to my seawall has been exhausted by some twenty feet. It's now twenty feet back of where it was. A lot of that because people slid down, slid down the face of the dune. And so when we sit here and we say, you know, if we were doing this deal with five-hundred front feet, I'd be, I'd want to come in and say, this made a great deal, it's terrific. But I think that we're being affronted, and I think that we're being unfairly presented with a situation that our home with two-hundred front feet between us and the park, it's not what we expected. It's not, we have a right for expectations in the future. We were told it was going to be five-hundred front feet, when I was told five-hundred front feet, I didn't. When I was told 500 front feet, I didn't feel a real concern, even though I hadn't been notified. But I felt that we hadn't been notified anything other than the 500. And we all come back and said, whoops, it's not going to be 500 anymore. It's going to be 200. And in fact, Windsor came to the association and said, there's going to be a public hearing and we want you to come and maybe represent it. However, if you say anything, good or bad, for or against, the $600,000 is off the table. We're not going to give you the money. So we all, as a group, said, you know, the money would be nice. But things are the way of the world. We don't allow anybody to do that to us. So we came to the meeting and we asked some questions. And we left that meeting, as I understand it, with a clear understanding that there would be 500 front feet in terms of the buffer. And with that being said, here we are tonight finding out that it's, would you say 180 feet there or 200 feet or something like that? Small. And I would, I would ask you to just consider if it were your own personal situation and you were sitting with, what, currently 1,500 feet between you and the throng that goes to the beach? If, how much you would want next to your home, the throng 200 feet away from your house instead of 1,500 feet? Makes a big difference, gentlemen. So respectfully, I submit that and I hope I haven't taken too much of the time, but I think our position is very valid. Again, I'll say to you, I would disappellate, withdraw my objections completely if I thought I were going to get the protection of even 500 feet. Showed to that, I'm strenuously opposed, as is my wife. Thanks for your time.
I guess as a matter of disclosure, I need to disclose this. Paul McDonald approached me to review the letter from Windsor and there was nothing in there about 500 feet in that letter. And I asked if that had been talked about and he said, yes, but it never made it into the letter.
That was one of Paul's concerns about wanting to know, is it?
I understand. You know, this property has a real history to it. I mean, before you came here, it was going to be devolved fairly dense and the homeowners' associations banded together to not have that happen. And Windsor withdrew that. So it could have had much worse. I understand.
Hello, gentlemen. Gene McDonald, Paul McDonald's son.
Hi.
I came down to the meeting. Gail invited me down. I thank you. I pretty much echo Mr. Roundtree. My father talked to me right before he passed away about the, and I remember the 500 feet. That was definitely, and he was very adamant about that. And I was walking off some paces today at the beach, went down to the public beach, talked to the lifeguards. They don't know what's going on. There's a lot of, what concerns me, I do agree, if I was Windsor, that would be a nice deal and adding a proper, or a nice park down there. The kiosks and the trails in a public place. I know where I'm from, they have a lot, you know, after dark, they have to be gone. That concerns me as a homeowner, or as my dad's homeowner now. The, having people walking through the woods there, right behind our property. I'm just a couple around from, around the corner of this loop here, about 10 o'clock, that white dot now back just south of that, yeah, that's us. But my neighbor, Ed Olson, just north of me, there's trees already marked right next to his property. Many palm trees have orange tags on them. So I don't know what's going on. That brought me concern last time I was here a few months ago. There's obviously something going on. I don't know if that's just, I can't imagine that's just surveying.
Does staff have any information on that? I don't think anything would be going on because that's going to be state-owned property.
Yeah.
There are more than 100 trees marked.
Yeah, a lot of trees are marked.
I believe that would be for the required survey that has to be done there. It's a tree survey.
That's true.
So the marked trees will correspond to a map that'll be created later.
Okay.
So there will be a map of all the trees of a certain species and a certain size at some point in the future because they have to do an environmental site survey.
Yeah, I agree that, I mean, that's better than a bunch of condos right there. That's true. I am concerned about the entrance where the, I don't know if Gail mentioned it, maybe the lifeguard station's going to remain where it is.
I believe the entrance to the park is going to remain where it is.
It's just going to be the parking lot move south?
Yes. And Windsor's paying for all of that.
Yeah. And my concern, again, with Mr. Roundtree is how far south is the parking lot going to be? Is there going to be some fencing?
Does staff have any information about that?
I know I'm getting ahead. I know this is just a land.
Yeah, we're not in the site plan right now.
Exactly.
We don't know any more than...
Okay. It's going to be at least 175 feet.
Oh, more than that.
It's going to have to be a lot more than that.
A lot more.
Yeah.
There hasn't been anything planned as of yet. Mr. Pellon from Kimble Horn is here, perhaps that might be a question he could address later on.
Okay. Great, thanks. Keith, you want to speak real quick? Keith?
Whether you want to or not.
I'm sorry, I'm dragging you up here.
I think we always caution you at a rezoning or cop plan time not to look at site plans because even though I have less of a problem with this being county property, but still, it's subject to change.
You're right. Keith?
There is a site plan on file with the county because we had a pre-op meeting so that they can avail themselves of it.
And we shouldn't be looking at it. You're right.
But is it possible to put 500 feet there?
I think it probably will.
Actually, you need to be talking about to the people who are swapping the land, not us who are swapping the zoning.
We're just doing zoning.
Bruce?
Thank you. Bruce Barquette for helping. I just want to point out, the land's going to be the county's. You often give them as much buffer as you want. We're not in control of that. In fact, when it was brought up at the county commission meeting, the Sanderling people asked for that and the county commission said, no, that's not reasonable. But that's not our decision. That's all in your hands.
Right. Does anybody else wish to speak from the public? Okay, seat.
You know, I inquire when we would find out.
Can you, this is recorded.
Forgive me a second.
If I may ask a question. Again, my name is Bob Roundtree. For the area that's marked in blue, that appears to be the 175 feet, what is the next area in green up to the blue line?
That's where the park will be moved. The green area is where the park will be at.
Now, where it's split into, where is the south side? That portion that's in the south side separated by the blue line in the middle of the green?
You're talking about this line here?
Yes.
That just happens to be the parcel line as they exist right now. Right now, that's Windsor's, let me just get this back up here.
Southern property one?
Yeah, Windsor's parcel right here and as is this one right here. But the park land is going to move down and intersect down here.
So can you tell me the width of the whole property then?
From north to south?
Right.
Where you want ocean width or?
Ocean width.
Ocean width.
Over 1,000 probably. Just the park itself, I think, is almost 1,000.
So we have 1,000 plus the state?
175, almost 1,200 feet.
Okay, so very close to 1,200 feet, oceanfront feet. Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate the information.
Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Okay, seat them down. I'll close the public hearing. Do you have a motion?
I have another, I have one more question, Bob.
Sure.
I would like to better understand the 175 and the 500. It seems that at some point, someone was negotiating or talking about 500, but it seems that there was no official
That's correct.
negotiated on paper 500-foot agreement.
That's correct. The buffer easements in the preservation area, the conservation area, were negotiated with the state because we were swapping a part of a conservation area. They wanted a like term, or a like parcel of property in a conservation area. We were required to do that because this parcel, the far northern parcel, which would be the Spalone Track, thank you very much. Spalone Track was bought with FERDAP funds and then gone ahead and dedicated to the state. And since it was done that, there are certain restrictions and we can and cannot do. If we use property purchased with FERDAP funds, we have to replace it with light-type property. So if we would take a three-acre beach park and decide to sell it, we would have to replace it with a three-acre beach park. We couldn't go out and purchase three acres in the west part of the county and call it even. So that's why that was flip-flopped down to the far south part.
Actually, this blown property was purchased with lack funds.
Right.
And then I think the state, we always try to get caught here, and the state purchased it with Carl money, I think. But let me tell you, I think the appropriate forum to discuss any further buffers is when this comes to the Board of County Commissioners meeting.
Right, right.
There actually was discussion at the board meeting and I think the board's intent is to not develop the south side of the park property where it abuts this conservation tract. I think there may very well, in the end, be a 500-foot, non-built-on parcel there. Right now, though, you know, we're not discussing that. And I can't really speak for the Board of County Commissioners or the others that are involved in the actual land swap part.
Yeah, I guess the point is that we need to be focusing on the zoning and not how we got to where we're at. I mean, it's been a long time.
It's been a long trip.
This thing has taken a long time.
You folks will have another opportunity. What we're going to do is make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners as to whether or not to do this. Then it'll go to the Board of County Commissioners and they'll vote on whether or not to accept our recommendation. At that time, you'll have an opportunity to speak to the Board of County Commissioners, who actually makes the legislative decision. But we're... How will they be notified or will they be notified when it goes to the county commissioners?
They'll be notified by letter.
Okay. Good enough? Not the association, but else?
No, I have your address now.
Individually, as I understand it. My only other concern is that we have covered our responsibilities under notification to the property, abutting property owners?
Yes. Back when the original land swap was performed, it was advertised in the press journal as required by statute.
Great. That's good enough for me. I have no other problems with it. As a matter of point, I'll make a motion to adopt as presented.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It passes unanimously.
Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of proposed amendments to Section 913.10.2 of the Code of Indian River County to lower the rating on bond securing warranty of subdivision improvements. And this is county-initiated and it is legislative. Will?
This is something that the Board of County Commissioners asked us to look at. In years past, the county had always required, before any subdivision plat was approved, that either the infrastructure be in place, which nobody ever did, or that the infrastructure be secured by some form of financing. And it was typically either cash deposit, a letter of credit, or a surety bond. Over the years, if we did have difficulties, it was always with the surety bonds. Whenever one had to be called, the bond company would typically request every piece of paper in the files about this. And rather than come forward and complete the infrastructure, typically you'd have to go to court to collect. We found that letters of credit and cash were much more fungible or easy to draw upon. And for that reason, when the county commission was looking at how it approved subdivisions a couple of years ago, they got away from allowing all horizontal improvements to be secured through one form or another and required that prior to final plat, 75% of all the infrastructure be in place. And they allowed security to be posted for only the remaining 25%, so that there was less risk and more investment before people started selling lots. At that time, they changed the required security for the construction improvements to allow only letters of credit or cash. They also deleted the allowance of performance bonds for warranty. Sometimes, some months after that change was put into effect, small developers came and said, once the improvements are there, you're really not at such risk for non-performance. You either have the letter of credit or cash to guarantee the improvements will be put in and no one will be occupying any units until some form of security is put up to warranty the improvements. And really what we're talking about is paving and drainage improvements. And at the same time, the board extended the warranty requirements from a one-year warranty to a three-year warranty. And whereas it formerly included only publicly dedicated improvements, this warranty of paving and drainage now extends to private improvements or roads and drainage that are turned over to a property owners' association. Some small developers came and said to the county subsequent to that that they were having difficulty getting bonds issued for the warranty work. On the advice of some surety companies, we had raised the standard. The old ordinance really didn't speak to the rating of the bonding company that was standing behind the bonds. And we learned that many times we were getting bonds, but they were from surety companies that were near insolvency and it really didn't do us any good. So the warranty bond rating was put at A+11, which is a very high standard. I think A+11 means that the company that's underwriting the bond has policyholder surplus of $1 billion to $1.25 billion. The request that came to the commission and they asked us to look at was dropping the required surplus to A+7, which means that the policyholder surplus is between 50 and 100 million. The way surety companies operate, they look at who, the company that they're underwriting, what's their financial strengths. They require them to file quarterly reports and have certain financial strength of their own before the bonding companies will stand behind them. And the smaller developers were simply not able to get the larger companies to be interested in underwriting them, in part because the dollar amounts were typically lower on the warranties. And so what they asked us to do is look at an A+7. Now, A still means that it's a superior financial strength from the bonding company and the plus 7 simply means that the surplus that the company holds is 50 to 100 million dollars. That rating is typically what the county requires when it enters into contracts for the performance of services for construction of county roads or buildings. Our administrative policy manual requires A+7, which is what this new ordinance amendment proposes. And this was brought to the Professional Services Advisory Committee. They thought it was an appropriate adjustment and that if we did have the A+7, which the county typically requires for its own work, that should suffice to warranty the paving and drainage improvements that have been installed in subdivisions. And that's the ordinance that's before you tonight. It simply lowers the rating of the bonding company from A+11 to A+7 on warranty of subdivision work that's already been completed.
Does that mean that the developer's going to get the bond cheaper? Is that?
I don't know that it means that they'll get them cheaper. It's just that the smaller builders didn't have the financial strength themselves to get a bond underwritten by these companies with a billion-dollar surplus. It was, as related to me, they're just two small potatoes for the large bonding institutions to deal with.
So this just increases the pool?
The likelihood that someone would deal with a smaller builder.
Any other questions?
None here, sir.
Okay, this...
This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak? Seeing none, close the public hearing.
Move to adopt as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passes unanimously.
We've got to have somebody opposed. Come on!
Well, the problem is, we have to have a unanimous.
Just for fun.
Okay. Let me read this into the record, Bill. Consideration of proposed amendments to Chapter 972 of the Code of Indian River County to limit temporary vehicle sales locations. And this is county-initiated, and it is legislative. Okay, Bill.
Good evening. Bill DeBrol on behalf of the County Attorney's Office. Back at the Board of County Commission meeting of November 7, 2006, staff was directed to draft an ordinance that would prohibit temporary sales of motor vehicles, temporary sales of motor vehicles, in the county on property not permanently allowed to conduct such sales. So what we did is we went ahead and the reason this ordinance is before you is because temporary sales are found in our land use regulations in Chapter 972. So therefore, the proposed ordinance had to be circulated and presented to the Professional Services Advisory Committee, as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission for tonight's public hearing. Concern has been expressed by some of the people that met with Chairman Wheeler that special vehicle sales attract vendors who are interested in a quick sale and less on warranty and dependability work. They also said that it was unfair to the people that had made significant investments in a permanent facility here, that it would allow out-of-town vendors to come and cherry-pick with a minimal investment to come and have their sales take place here. So what we did is we went ahead and drafted an ordinance, as you see before you, that would allow temporary vehicle and boat sales only at sites that are already permitted to present vehicle and boat sales. Now, this ordinance would only apply to the unincorporated part of the county. It would not apply to the city of Vera Beach or Sebastian, as they would have to pass and enact their own ordinance amendments to prohibit any type of temporary sales. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer some of them.
I guess I have one question. Was there any alternatives to this explored?
There were some alternatives. We took a look at other types of ordinances that cities had. I believe the city of Titusville had an ordinance that said you could hold eight temporary vehicle sales, boat sales, per year. But the first four were reserved for dealers within the city limits of Titusville. And after those had expired, then it would be opened up to everyone else. So the net effect would be that a local dealer or two would go in on the first day that the permits were available to be purchased, buy up all eight of them, and hence there would be no out-of-town sales. So we went this way, restricting them to sites already approved for car sales and boat sales.
But I guess my understanding, the reason that this came up was because of warranty issues more than anything. Is that...
That was one of the complaints that was heard at the meeting that commissioners had, or that Commissioner Wheeler had with some of the local car dealer and boat dealers, that out-of-town folks would come in, looking for the quick sale, and be less anxious to stand behind their work. Not necessarily with a new car, as you know, if you buy a new car...
Right, you have a manufacturer's warranty.
You can take it to any dealership, and the warranty work would be added. This would be a car that would be out of warranty.
But, I mean, it probably could have been addressed by requiring certain, you know, having a deal somewhere locally here to do warranty work, or some, you know, some other form, rather than just totally shutting things down.
That might be a suggestion that you'd like to make. The other restraint that we have to work with is that we have to also honor the Commerce Clause of the Constitution that says that we have to allow people to conduct business freely and fairly within. A good example would be North County Pool. We cannot prohibit out-of-town people from coming and swimming at the North County Pool. We can't be protectionist in that regard.
And am I hearing that this could possibly be challenged?
I don't know if it would be challenged or not. That would be up to an affected person that would want to hold a temporary sale.
Yeah. When you say "out of town," what do you mean?
Somebody from outside Indian River County.
The county, outside?
Yes, outside of the county.
This isn't going to abridge anybody's right to sell their car on their own property, right? Just put it out on the front and put a "for sale" sign on it? This is for...
Organized events.
Correct. The temporary sale usually has a structure, catering, needs additional bathroom facilities, things like that.
We get a lot of flyers and things like this sometimes, you know, for cars or boats by whoever, and they're going to be there on Saturday. And I know that the Federal Credit Union does that sometimes for their people that are in that organization. Will this affect that?
Yes.
Or them? It will.
Yes. This will prohibit a sale at that facility, because the credit union is approved to act as a credit union. They are not approved to sell vehicles.
So there's an annual sale out at the mall for recreation vehicles. That's what this is aimed at also, right?
Correct.
And Hobart Park and stuff like that.
Correct.
What are the approved sites? I know you had a list of some of them in here, but is it complete?
The approved sites under the new ordinance or under existing?
Yeah, new ordinance.
It would have to be a car or boat dealership that is already approved to sell vehicles.
Like the fairgrounds, in the fairgrounds?
No, it would not be the fairgrounds, because the fairgrounds is not permanently approved to sell vehicles or boats.
Under one permanent.
All right. Any other questions up here?
So this is, then, a previous committee looked at this?
Professional Services Advisory Committee looked at this and voted...
And the vote was...
Six to one to deny the ordinance. They did not like it.
If I could just stand for... Plenary Director, just in regard to sites that are already approved for certain kinds of events, we'd announced that at the beginning of the PSAC meeting, and it's in the minutes. The Fairgrounds site is approved for special events, and we do not issue temporary use permits for events there. It's approved for events. The Board of County Commissioners themselves could set a policy as to what kinds of events are there and so forth. Riverside Park in the city, again, it's not in the county jurisdiction, but in the city, they have special events there too, all the time. And I don't believe the city zoning and planning department issues individual permits for that either, because it's approved. So I think Riverside Park and the Fairgrounds would not be, they are not now affected by temporary use permit type of ordinances, and they would not be affected by this.
Just one correction, Bill. The minutes say that PSAC unanimously voted not to approve the amendments, and Peter Robinson had to abstain.
I thought there was one dissenting vote.
I'm just reading the minutes.
I understand.
Yeah, just a point, that's a good point. These are draft minutes, and I thought that Steve Moller voted against it, but we'll check with the PSAC at their next meeting. Good point.
I don't know if it fully matters, but, you know, it was substantially against it.
I don't really totally understand this, but is it a group that is interested in protecting people that would buy cars or trucks or boats from someone who just comes into the county, sets up, sells them something, leaves, and then the thing doesn't work? They have no warranty on it? Is that...
That's part of it.
That's part of it, yes, sir.
I think a lot of this has to do with the local dealerships wanting to, it's protectionist, to close off the, you know, put a dam up.
How many instances of problems have we had?
From what I have read in the newspaper, there was one reported by Mr. Campana. We have not had any in our office, and I don't believe...
Better Business Bureau, have they had any complaints?
Not to my knowledge, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion up here?
No.
All right. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. When you come up, please state your name and address for the record.
I know this guy.
I am Fred Augenstein. I live at 179 Caprona Street in Sebastian. I also own a company called The Ad Agency, which is located at 735 Commerce Center Drive, Suite F in Sebastian. I spoke at the other meeting about this too, and I do have some information. So okay, if I take these packages?
Sure. Fred, can you kind of summarize what you have here?
Yes, and I do have a sheet.
Okay.
Similar. Basically, what I've done is kind of give my background a little bit, just so you also know my history in Indian River County, where I've represented a lot of different car dealerships, included in the Indian River County Auto Dealers Association, that used to do combined sales at Dodger Town and Riverside Park. Over a period of time, with a lot of different changes of ownership, they kind of decided to stop doing those kind of things. And it's a situation...
I'm sorry, I wasn't listening. I was reading. Can you back up just a little bit?
Sure. I was just, some of the material there kind of lends itself to my history of Indian River County. And I used to handle the advertising for quite a few different dealerships. And also the Indian River County Auto Dealers Association, who used to do combined sales at Dodger Town and at Riverside Park. All the dealers coming together to try to create events to help sales happen for all of them. And over the years, they've kind of stopped doing that. And even though after I started my advertising agency, I actually worked for somebody else when I handled them. I handled Vera Beach Imports for a short period of time, but then actually got involved in Mesa Park and Entertainment and that kind of thing. I didn't have as much time. But I now represent Gator Chrysler Suzuki out of Melbourne. And we do a lot of off-site sales, both in Brevard County and Indian River County. They have, you know, some that are successful, some that aren't so successful, but they do have a large investment when they go and do these sales. And since 2004, I've spent right around $200,000 in media buying from Indian River County entities, the Press Journal, radio stations, cable, to help promote these events. And I have hundreds of entry blanks from people from Indian River County, St. Lucie County, and Brevard County who come to these sales. So there's quite a bit of evidence, God bless you, quite a bit of evidence to say that there's a lot of people that think there's a lot of validity to these sales, and they're satisfied once they've gotten a vehicle. And I just wanted to address a few of the things that, you know, have come up as far as objections from the car dealers and/or Mr. Wheeler or whoever was involved in those meetings before. You know, the bottom line for me is that a good idea for the residents of Indian River County to change this ordinance? In my mind, I don't think it is. I think they're getting good value. They may not be, may or may not be able to get that value here, I'm not sure. But they wouldn't come to these sales and buy these vehicles if they could already get that same kind of a deal here in the county. The Indian River Mall would be negatively impacted greatly. The other place that we do our sales is the old Walmart store up in Sebastian, because it's the closest place to Sebastian that's large enough. They would be impacted. But the other thing is, you know, it's commerce. It's not just Indian River County residents that's come to these sales, Brevard County, St. Lucie County. They may shop at the mall, they may shop at the stores, including going to the county offices there, you know, in Sebastian, outside of Sebastian. And as far as the warranty work is concerned, if a car's under warranty, any dealership, whether it's Chrysler, or Suzuki, or Buick, can do that warranty work. They get $50 to $90 an hour to do that warranty work.
I think the concern was not new cars.
No, it doesn't have to be a new car. All it has to be is within the warranty period. Some dealerships have seven years, 100,000 mile warranty.
I understand, but, you know, I think the concern was used cars that are out of warranty that where the person comes in and represents that it's going to last for 90 days or whatever.
I've never heard of that. I've never heard that that was a complaint. Alls I'm knowing is, if a car is still under warranty, which a lot of them are now, because they're longer warranty periods, that dealership gets paid for doing that warranty work. So in my eyes, from my history of knowing car dealerships, you know, if they get a new person in the service department, they didn't sell that car, that's an annuity. That's something that should pay them $17,000 over the life of that person to try and make them a customer, and through what they do with their service in their dealership. So it's a positive thing, not a negative thing. The other thing I had in here was just that the Indian River Mall pays over $900,000 in property taxes. I did a compilation of the six of the 12 dealerships, they pay a little over $330,000 in property taxes. I mean, I know it's an issue. I know that, you know, people would like to keep their business here, but I don't think this is the way to go about doing it. In my mind, there's always a marketing solution to problems like this. And in my mind, that's what the solution should be as far as from their standpoint. Free enterprise, like I said there, I think is one of the greatest things that America has going for it. So, you know, in essence, I just think it's not the proper thing for the county to be doing. I think that when you look at what's best for the residents of Indian River County, that this ordinance shouldn't be changed. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Fred.
Gentlemen, I'm Brian McNulty with Gator Chrysler in Melbourne, Florida. We're about 37 miles right up US-1. We've been there for 37 years. I've been there for seven of those 37 years. And I was at the Professional Services Advisory Committee meeting, and I wanted to just give you a little sense of the flavor of the discussion that went on, and then talk about a few other things. I started that meeting by asking Attorney DeBrol what motivated this change in this law. And he stated, and I'm reading from his notes, there had been complaints from temporary car sales, that people had difficulty getting warranty work done. Upon further discussion, as he told you tonight, there were no complaints from citizens. The only complaints came at a meeting with car dealers and Chairman Wheeler. And if you get a group of car dealers together, they're always going to have something to complain about. All right? So that's just the flavor of how this meeting went. One of the gentlemen in the committee, and maybe Mr. DeBrol can remember who it was, was worried about art festivals. He says, "What about when one of the local artisans gets mad and corners one of the commissioners and says, 'I've had it with these art festivals. We've got to have a new law. We've got to ban art festivals unless they have a business in Indian River County.'" And that was a concern. Another concern that was brought up two or three times was Christmas trees, pumpkins, and it went on and on and on. One of the gentlemen who was sitting on the panel, I think he might be the city attorney for Felsmere, Mr., I think it was Mr. Dill. Mr. Dill informed the committee the only way the county could regulate temporary sales would be under police powers for public health, safety, and welfare. And he felt the county needed to provide statistics to justify the consumer issue needing protection. In other words, he wanted to know, who are we protecting? Mr. Dill, I mean, I can go on for hours on this thing. Attorney DeBrol stated he was unaware of any temporary sales records indicative of accidents or safety issues. And I just want to tell you what happens when we come down here to do a sale, and we're not the only ones, because Orange County Distributors comes out here, SUV Kingdom comes down here, several other dealers. But for us to get a permit, we have to first go to Maria Valmer at the county, submit all of our plans in writing, including our advertising stating we're only going to be here four days. Then we have to go to Chief Nolan at the fire department, and we go and set up an inspection, we pay a fee. They come out, and you can't believe how thorough they are. You guys have a great fire department. They check the tent for flammability, they check the fire extinguishers are charged, they check for the placement of fire extinguishers, the routing of the power cords, the tightness of the cables on the stakes or barrels. They make sure that this is a safe site. They make sure that we have a handicap porta potty on site for the folks. This is not just a haphazard caravan that drives into town at midnight, sets up, sells five cars, and disappears. We're going to be right up the street, 37 miles. SUV Kingdom is right down in Miami or Fort Lauderdale, and Orange County Distributors is over in Orlando. It might not be fun to have all these people coming into your backyard selling cars, but for 37 years, we've sold 25 to 30 cars a month in Indian River County. Whether we come here or not, we sell those cars. One time we came down and sold 33 cars, one time we came down and sold 13. We like to come down here and give people a chance to come and shop without making the drive. They're going to buy from us anyway, but we like to make it convenient. And if our sale is successful, great. If we fall on our face, then that would... If we fall on our face, then that was our opportunity. And as Fred said, we spend a lot of money on advertising with your county vendors. We don't have an out-of-county vendor come in and advertise for us. We also discussed at the last meeting, and Mr. DeBraul's very familiar with the Sherman Act of 1890, the antitrust laws. And there's some very specific things in there about government setting up protectionist trade zones, and it's called a du jour monopoly. Should this bill pass, someone asked if it would be challenged. I'm gonna say yes, this will be challenged as a du jour monopoly to prevent and to single out car dealers. You're okay if motorcycle dealers come down here, you're okay if aircraft dealers come down here, you're okay if, you know, a lot of other dealers come to your county, but you can't have a car dealer because you're singling out car dealers. And I just think it's, you're getting involved in things you don't need to. There was talk of, of warranty work. The federal government spent years coming up with an as-is form that has to be on the window of every used car, and I wish I had one in my hand to show you. But if a car is marked as-is, it's a federal law that the customer understands and signs and receives a copy that, "I just bought this car as-is." If the car comes with a warranty, it's a federal law that it be specifically spelled out. On my warranty on a car out of warranty, it says 30 days or 1,000 miles, and it lists out a whole list of drivetrain parts, the engine, the transmission, the drive axle, so on and so forth. And it says that I'll pay 50% of the repair at my facility, which is 37 miles up the road. But no one's ever had a problem getting a warranty repair at Gator Chrysler. And it's a federal law, it's already been regulated, it's already been done. You don't want to reinvent the wheel just to worry about warranty, there's federal laws in place. If I sell a used car with 34,000 miles and it's still under factory warranty till 36, it's also a federal law that any Chrysler dealer anywhere in the United States honor that warranty. So again, this has already been regulated by the feds. We also have to get state permission to bring our sales license off premises and come down to Indian River Mall or Sebastian, wherever we're having our sale. We have to have state permission to, to move the cars before it happens and to move them back. So again, all of this has been regulated and you're just getting into areas as, as a county government that seem to be favoring one group of businesses. And that I think you're gonna find is a du jour monopoly. So someone said tonight that you hadn't voted against anything. I urge you to do like the Professional Services Advisory Committee and vote this down with a majority. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, I'm Ursula Gunner, the Director of Mount Marketing at Indian River Mall here in Vero. As the gentleman before me mentioned, I've been in my position for five years and we've probably done, I don't know, close to the 38 events that are listed on this paper at the mall. And I've never, ever had a complaint about a car dealer from outside the county made to me. And if we did, we would certainly follow up with that particular dealer and make right. You know, we are, we are the, I like to thank the cultural epicenter of the community. We, we give a lot of people jobs here, we pay a lot in taxes, as the gentleman before me pointed out. Actually, we're the fourth largest taxpayer, over $900,000, probably a million soon. And we do appreciate the, the right to do these events on our property. The main reason we do them is to draw people to the mall. When we do these events, they sell 30, 40 cars, over 500 people come out and look at these cars. Those 500 people also come into the mall, they patronize the food court, the department stores, the commission sales associates. We need these events to draw people to our mall. I also want to bring up the point that local dealers are always invited. I, I hit the pavement, that's part of my job, and get them to advertise with us. And currently, two car dealers, well, one's already in there and another one's looking to come in. So some car dealers do advertise in the mall with vehicle placement, they just choose not to do the parking lot events, but anyone's allowed to. We don't just solicit to outside dealers. And I, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna close the public hearing. Anybody have a motion or discussion or...
Well, I'll start being the mild meek withdrawn person that I am. I haven't really been shown any convincing data that there's a persistent or pervasive problem. And I guess my gut feeling is that it's too much government. So I, I just won't be able to support this.
That's, I think that's interesting because when I was younger, Craig's brother probably was as anti-government as a...
That's true, that's true.
As anyone that I ever saw. And I always respected him for that and I'm not concerned about the possibility of a lawsuit, but I think that allowing these sales gives an opportunity sometimes to people that don't have a lot of money to get a vehicle for, for their family and their needs, so I'm not in favor of this at all.
I go along with it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not in favor of this thing, so. I'm worried about the pumpkins.
Mr. Chairman, Brian, excuse me, Brian, would you come up a minute?
Yes.
My question to you is, do you hold these events in other locations, in locations other than Vero Beach, Indian River County slash...
Absolutely. We're having a sale next week in West Melbourne at the Sam's Club. We're having a sale next month at the Melbourne Square Mall.
I just wanted that to be out for the public to understand that you don't target Vero Beach or any location. This is a, a business opportunity that you spread out through the state.
Absolutely. We, we love to come down here, there are great people down here and we like to come down and see you.
Thank you, sir.
I also have serious reservations about this change to the, I guess, LDRs, so I just, I don't know, it just smacks of protectionism.
These things are just gutsy American way of life. I, gosh, if I couldn't go see a used car sale or, I mean, I'd, I'd have withdrawal symptoms, you know?
We need a motion.
Well, you have cars...
I move to deny.
Okay.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Unanimous.
You have cars on the internet, you have cars in newspapers.
Right. Okay, next item on the agenda is Commissioners Matters. Does anybody have anything?
None here.
Okay, and Planning Matters, I think you're gonna...
I have one, as usual, Bob. I don't think, Bob and Stan, I don't, I don't think that there's really anything that can be done about this because I know you properly notify people that are associated with an action that's going to occur. I just wish there were some way that we could cause the association to notify all of their members when something like this happens because I, and I know, I used to do the same thing about, and having to notify people, do the best you can, but I always hate it when I hear somebody from the public come in and they feel that they were not allowed to notice.
We, we did notify, yeah, I understand. Craig, I swear to you, that whole association was involved in this. I, I was involved in it. They, they knew.
And we, we notified 15 people by certified mail, we're in 300 feet, and I'm gonna check tomorrow, Gail didn't have the list with them, but I told them to get with me tomorrow.
This has been going on for years and years.
Yeah, that's one of the things, we, this, this group has always been on them about notification of, of bidding properties and they're, they're pretty good at it, but we still hit them every now and then.
And separate, separate and apart from the notification of the land use and rezoning change, before there's any exchange of county property, which this involves, a resolution setting forth all the terms and conditions of the proposed exchange has to be advertised in the newspaper before the exchange is even considered by the board, so there's...
It's a huge lead time.
Multiple points of notice.
Thank you.
You guys were, you're gonna abbreviate the, the discussion on the...
Yes, yes, very much so. On, on the update on the April 25th workshop, as you all know, one day after that workshop was the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and we, we passed out and started discussing a summary, we had two summaries, and the one that staff had done had dozens of points that have been brought up. What we're doing right now, just to update you all, we're putting all of those ideas into a matrix, grouping them by topic, what could fit into a comp plan or EAR process, what would be perhaps handled by another process. And we intend to have that in your packet for the next meeting, so you all can take a look at it with everything else, and then we can discuss it hopefully when there's a, there's a full Planning and Zoning Commission. That will just kind of give a layout for how you, you could address all of those items. I, I think it's yet to be determined whether or not, you know, all of those items have merit, some of them may conflict, and so there's probably some weeding out that needs to be done too, but at least we want to get it in a format where you could get your hands around what, how they might be addressed and then go from there. So that's, just wanted to update you all on that.
As, as you heard last meeting, I was, my suggestions weren't well received on getting something like that together, so I'm glad to hear you guys are doing that. You need to have each individual item so that you can get your, like you said, get your hands around each individual item and not as a huge smorgasbord, so I'm glad to hear you guys are doing that.
Under Attorneys Matters, there's a few things that are starting to happen. You may remember that there was a staff determination that a residential treatment center, I think on 37th Street, was a non-conforming use that had not ceased. Neighbors appealed it to this commission who did not agree with the staff determination. It went to the Board of County Commissioners and between your hearing and theirs, an issue was raised about no filing fee having been paid. I advised the board that that was a requirement of the appeal and they decided not to hear it. Subsequently, the neighbors appeared before the commission again and they decided to rehear the petition. The first time they decided not to hear it, Mr. O'Hare on behalf of the neighbors filed a petition in court to review that decision. When the board decided to reconsider that and hear the petition on the merits, the source representatives, I believe it's IM Ministries, filed a petition with a court to prohibit them from hearing it, saying that they didn't have jurisdiction. And there have been a number of pleadings filed and earlier this week, there was an hour and a half hearing, the court reserved a ruling on it, but promised to rule quickly. Also, earlier this year, there was a comprehensive plan amendment in the area north of 510 by Double R and D where they were asking to be changed to an L1 land use designation, designation with RS3 zoning. And the county commission turned that down at the adoption stage. They have filed suit to review that decision. And also, there was a proposal for an animal kennel, dog boarding called Top Hats and Tails, I believe, about 79 1866 Avenue. And the county commission turned that down. I don't remember what your vote was, but that's also subject of a suit currently.
Wow.
So we have a few things going on.
What was the one north of 510 you said?
It, the applicant was Double R and D.
It's the Lisa Hess property right near Blue Water Bay.
Oh, okay.
Forty acre tract, complaint amendment.
It was the self-tributaries of the St. Sebastian River.
Right, right.
What do you call a quick ruling on that source issue, Bill?
If we had a ruling within a month to six weeks, I can say that quick.
Okay. You guys have anything else? Okay, you're adjourned.
Thank you, guys.